We'll call this meeting to order for January 28th, a regular meeting of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. The board met in closed session. We had Item 1A was direction to staff. Item 2A was direction to staff. Claim 2B was denied. 2C, direction to staff. With that, we're coming to the regular meeting if I can turn the page here. All right, would you please stand, Joyce, to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item is public matters not on the agenda. These are discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff in a committee for a report at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there is a three-minute limit per person and would you sign in and state your name if you come to the podium. Good morning. We won't talk you.
Do you want to lower your mic a little bit there? Maybe you can turn the microphone on and maybe lower it if it's on or on off.
There we go. Hey, great. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Marion Coran. I have recently been elected to the California Senior Legislature by the Advisory Council for Area 12 Agency on Aging. I represent Amador, Calaveras, Tooleme, Miriposa and Alpine Counties. The California Senior Legislature is a volunteer organization. Our primary mission is to gather ideas for legislation at the state and federal levels that will help preserve and enhance the quality of life for older Californians and their families. In 1979, State Assembly Member Henry Mello introduced legislation to create nonpartisan volunteer grassroots body of seniors 60 years of age and older to be elected by their peers. CSL first met in July of 1981. Will have been active for 44 years this coming July. I am here to ask for your help in identifying issues concerning seniors in Amador County. Are there problems that create barriers to seniors continuing to live in the setting of their choice as long as safely possible? Could the State of California change a regulation, a requirement, or fund a small project that would make a difference? I would love to make a phone call. I would love to make a phone appointment with each one of you to discuss this subject. I have a brochure describing CSL along with my contact information. I will be emailing each one of you to request a phone appointment in the near future. Thank you so much, and I don't know how to get my brochures to all of them.
Heather Schill will get handed out.
Brochures to hand out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Brenda Walker. I think almost all of you know me except for Dan. You've seen me before, I think. I come to speak to you today about my concerns about how road funding and fixing is administered today. The need for dollars to fix our roads has been a constant concern often voiced by Supervisor Oneta. The attempt at our last election to set up a sales tax went down in defeat. That did not happen in Sutter Creek. Their sales and tax initiative passed. The difference between the two taxes and was the lack of vocal support and door-to-door campaigning on the part of each supervisory district, door-to-door. Also, the lack of information that such monies could be used for getting matching grants from the state of California. I learned that from a news media post about it in Placer County. I would encourage you to try again, but only if you are actively invested in success. Are you working on it for us? Secondly, after attending a Public Works Committee meeting last week, I have a concern over the roads in my area. From my point of view, and they are highly traveled, I was wondering if a vehicle count has ever been done. I would like to show you a map, which I passed out, drawn in 2021. It's come from a newspaper article, but the map was drawn by me. During this redistricting time, this map was seen by many others, but perhaps not by you. The rules in creating this map required that equal population in each drawn district. Those are equal populations. You see, the map clearly shows that the population in and outside of Pine Grove is very high. Thus, my concern is that you, as decision-makers, need to realize the effects of your decisions regarding roads in that area will affect many, many, many people. Please take this into consideration when making your decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any Zoomers?
No, not at this time.
All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. I'm looking for approval of today's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, and I think you have one addendum.
Yeah, we do have it, and the addendum will be five D, the EMCC question, and the minutes will move to five E.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make that a motion.
Second. All right. Any public comment? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Agenda's approved, five zero. That was Oneta and Brown, was it, second? You were the second.
Yes.
We are going to have a public hearing at nine o'clock, or it's close to, right?
Consent first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any items? Okay, approval of the consent. Anything need to be pulled or discussions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move? Second.
All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Brown, a second by Supervisor Epperson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now we're ready for the public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, crew, and members of the board, staff, and members of the public. I am bringing to you this morning a report regarding the Community Development Block Grant that we received to help the Interfaith Food Bank obtain a mobile food truck so that they could provide food to people in rural areas in the county that are not able to transport themselves to the food bank itself. The report is just a summary of the grant process, kind of how it proceeded. The truck, when the truck was obtained, the various activities that occurred. We did extend the grant from the original ending date to October 31st, 2024. That gave us a little bit of extra time to continue to purchase food and pay for a staff member to drive the truck around in the county. The food bank did come and did a report a while back on, on the mobile truck, which was great. In the end, what I was able to obtain from the food bank is that they were, served three thousand three hundred and forty households, six thousand three hundred and thirty-six unique individuals, and with return visits, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-nine people. At the end of the grant period, we'll have about fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars left over. That is the spend-down amount that we used for the grant was originally, I want to say the right amount, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars. And so that fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-six balance that's left is after we've paid for the truck itself and all the outfitting of the truck, the administration for the grant, staffing, volunteers, food, and the expenses for the truck. Did you have any questions or?
Will that go towards food purchase?
It did. It, there was.
It already did.
There was a substantial amount. So basically what's happening here is we're closing the grant out. Our performance period ended for this grant on October 31st, 2024. The public hearing piece of this is just a requirement that the grant has in order for us to close it out.
All right.
Looks like about a hundred and six thousand with the food purchases, is that correct?
Um, I have that on page three of the report. It's my way. So food purchases, yes, sir, a hundred and six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents.
You know, one thing that's kind of struck me a little bit, you're talking about like sixty-three hundred unique individuals. That's like one-sixth of the county's population, basically. Not quite, that's a lot of people.
There is a lot of people, and it, the report also explains to where those people fall in income categories. In the report on page two, in the first paragraph, you can see that about ten percent of these individuals were in the extremely low-income category of zero to thirty percent of the, of the area median income, and then the ninety percent fell into the low-income category.
You go grocery store, you get sticker shock anymore?
Agree.
Right, anymore? Any public comment? Zoomers?
Not at this time.
I think you should open the public hearing and then close the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll declare this public hearing open. Now, do we have any public comment?
Move to close public hearing? Second.
All right, we had a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? No, carries five zero. All right.
Thank you very much.
This was just a presentation, right? We don't even need a motion to accept it, or do we?
I, I don't think so. This is just a procedural requirement to have the public.
There's a report requirement to.
Correct. As far as I could see in the paper, the closeout paperwork, it didn't require a resolution or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we're ready to move on to the regular agenda. Five A is discussion and possible action regarding next steps for the State Route 88 Pine Grove Corridor Improvement Project. We have ACTC Director here and our Public Works Director. Good morning.
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 Richard Veal, Public Works Director.
John Gedney, ACTC.
Um, you were here at the last meeting. We discussed this project, and one of the questions that came up that we were tasked to find out is, um, the ability of the funds that were set aside for the project, whether they could be used for anything else, or, you know, repurposed or whatever. And the information that we've gathered is such that the vast majority of all the funds for this project are dedicated for this project, and if they're not used for this project, they will be, will be sent back to be redistributed in other directions. So that's, that's, that was a finding that, that we came up with, and I, I understand there's been discussions at the, with the, with the state, the CTC with regards to this project and such.
Right, I had a meeting with Supervisor Cornell and John Gedney, our ACT Director and myself, and we talked to the CTC Second Command. And just, uh, for the supervisors who weren't there, unless you wanted to be on. The, uh, they worked Smiths to death to start with, whether it was encumbered or we can get it back, but now it's allocated and we can't, there's no way to do it. And after about an hour of talking, the point came up that in September, when we had it allocated to go out to bid, we had a Department of Finance letter that said the funding was there. Reality, we missed a deadline to extend the funding, and it, there was no funding, and there is no funding. So our choices really are to just walk away and do nothing and worry about local roads from now on, or she assured us, this lady who is very sympathetic to our situation, that she would get us on the March Agenda Meeting of the CTC or a post-lapsation refund, some long title. And we could apply for, or I think that's what, I know that's what we're going to apply for, because we were short of funding to do it, so we're going to apply for the funding refund, our six million something plus, about two million, to get it where it'd be where we could do what was originally bid before the latest downsides. That make sense? Am I saying that right?
I, I think, basically, we're, she's offered us the opportunity to request a, uh, she calls it a fact-based time extension.
That's it.
She's asking, she's allowing us to go before the CTC to request an additional twenty-month extension to, um, consider, consider options and salvage the project essentially.
But the only way we can get the money back is to do that project in some form?
Yes, I think clearly we heard that once the funds were allocated, the, at the programming stage, when funds are programmed, there is the option to have them restored to the county region in the, in the guidelines. But once the county requests the funds to be allocated for that next phase, essentially asking for the money to be in the county's checking account, those funds either have to be spent to build the project, or if the project is not pursued, they are rescinded. The word in the guidelines is rescinded.
Right. But she told you what to put in the letter for the appeal.
Yes, and we've talked, we've consulted with Caltrans District 10 Director, and she's already bonded and helpfully asking her staff to work with us on this.
Because I think the Transportation Commission realizes they have some culpability to tell us to go ahead and bid because the funding's there, nobody checked, basically.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. So who missed the, uh, the, uh?
Deadline?
Deadline.
We did. That's our, but there's been four project managers, and our project manager left in October, so nobody has really looked at it. But last extension we got, we got a email six months ahead of time, which you would.
Yeah.
You know, my bank sends me an email every day, how you doing, blah, 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 blah. So I don't know how that all fell through the cracks, but the first half hour, they were just, you're dead in the water. You can't get the money. You should have followed the rules, and it was encumbered, now it's allocated. So I asked her, I said, okay, you set the STIP funds for the year. What if you didn't give us some we owed? Couldn't you unallocate out of your fund and make us whole? Well, that's not how it works. It's kind of a one-way street. You pay and hope for the best. Very educational, but I felt like the other thing she did, we missed the deadline even to get on the March meeting. She told Director Gedney, get me an email outlining the problems, and I'll carry it and get it on the March meeting for us.
That was helpful.
Yeah.
Well, she also admitted that historically we got an email warning us of each deadline, and this time, for some reason, is the first time in her knowledge that that hasn't taken place.
Yeah.
She was admitting some culpability on there. You know, a question I have too, I mean, the counties, if a project went ahead, the county would be responsible for sidewalks.
No, that's the other thing, the most important thing. They agreed to take over as the lead agency if they fund.
That's, the question was going, okay. I like, I like that portion.
Yeah.
I was getting asked about who's responsible for maintaining all the stoplights if it went forward. So they'd be lead agency if it went forward?
Yep.
And she insinuated that they're doing that with all rural counties because we just don't have the staff.
She did say that these partnerships over the years was a good idea in 2017, and they're disaster in almost every rural county.
Yes, it's not just us, it's every rural county.
She was well aware of. But she's got to work with the Caltrans person, Grace is her.
Mike Seo?
Yeah, Director Mike Seo.
Yeah. So we can't bid it because it's unfunded, so.
This, this project, again, I mean, it seems to never, it's likely it's going to live or die. We never seem to get to some, it never seemed to get the definitive situation. I mean, so now where does it sit? So it goes back to the previous project? Which project is that? I mean, not the one we're just talking about, previous meeting, but it's the one previous to that, is that what I understand, or my?
Uh, it's the existing project.
Oh, okay, it is existing.
The existing project has environmental clearance, hundred percent design, right-of-way acquisition, and it's authorized to proceed to construction. So it's, it's the existing project with the existing funding package, and this request we're asking you to authorize today is to approach the CTC requesting a twenty-month time extension to work out details of transferring the pack, the project in its entirety as it is right now to Caltrans District 10. They will assume lead agency status, essentially be the contractor of choice, and with all the, we'll have twenty months to iron out the details, and that project will be transferred over, and then essentially county will not be responsible for pursuing the bid, and we won't, we are not asking you to proceed to bid with the county as lead agency anymore. We're going to work on a transfer to taking the project.
We're going to work on a transfer to taking the project in its entirety to, uh, Caltrans District Ten for their implementation.
Which I suggested three years ago.
Indeed.
This is what I'm saying, just keeps living. I'm like, what is going on?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. See, any public comment on this item? I thought, yep. Thank you, gentlemen.
I figured that ended me and beg you to keep, do what they just said because I am so impressed that the state would take it. Please give it back to them. The people in Pine Grove, as I showed you on the map, there's a lot of people there. Yes, okay. There's a lot of people that come from your district, Mr. Brown, that come down that hill. There's a lot of people, Mr. Drew, that go up the hill because they want to go to the lake in the summer. There's a lot of people, and I figured out this week that we are like Lockford. Only we don't have stoplights in it. How many people go to Lowdy that go through Lockford? There's, you don't see it, you don't know it, but the people who are trying to cross that road need a stoplight to control the people who like to go down the middle lane because we're going too slow. So thank you very much. I hope you'll consider that.
All right. Other public comments? Any zoomers?
Not at this time.
All right, we'll bring her back to the board. Any more discussion?
So what you're looking for is a motion to allow ACTC to push this over to Caltrans and, and bottom line.
Caltrans put up the funding and be the lead agency.
Be the lead agency.
I think, I think we're asking, we're not even at that state yet. We're asking to restore the funding to the project and then we can hand it to Caltrans. Is that how I gathered it?
I thought that was part of the, they were going to take over as lead agency.
This is, um, this is called a fact-based, um, time extension request for the allocation, uh, to, to allow for an extension for the allocated funds that missed the deadline for that previous extension. Now we're going back with, uh, Caltrans as in partnership, as, as you mentioned, acknowledging some culpability to, um, have the, have the funds restored to the project under the allocation phase of this. So we're asking, we're asking for, um, we're not asking for any additional funding. We're not asking Caltrans to add funding to it. We're just asking for the funding package as has been previously authorized and lapsed to be restored through a kind of a, a post, post deadline extension request.
Well, currently the project has zero dollars because of one piece of paper. So we're going back to plead our case that they would restore that money because it was just one piece of paper that they didn't warn us about. And once that money is refunded, then we, we present it to Caltrans as, uh, to be the, ask them to be the lead agency.
Exactly, exactly.
Is that a motion or?
Uh, I was kind of like.
It's getting pretty close.
A clean, a clean motion would be direction to staff to approach the California Transportation Commission and request a post-fact time extension. So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
One of the things that I thought was very clear that they were going to be the lead agency.
Yes, yes, but that needs, those details need to be worked out. The first step, and actually I misphrased it. It's a, the fact-based.
Post. It's my first motion and you made me say it wrong.
This is, this is step. Time extension request.
So this is step one of two steps.
This is the first step to allow us to go to the CTC, restore the, the, the project, make it, make it whole again. And then we are working with District Ten to then transfer the, the project to them. And that, that was the advice we were given by CTC staff. So we're trying to follow step by step their advice.
And from what I gathered, the project, even if the post-long title goes well, um, the project doesn't go forward unless it gets handed to Caltrans. Because we're at a point where not capable of doing it without them taking on lead agency. Is that correct?
They're willing probably more than capable, but yeah.
No, I'm sorry, that might be the wrong word.
They are willing and we had that discussion, uh, several years ago, uh, they were willing at that time to consider it and they're willing again to work with us. And, uh, Director McSao has actually contacted me yesterday and letting me know that her, she's informed her staff to begin working with us upon your action.
Okay. Want to make one more run out?
Could you say that and I'll say so moved?
We're requesting a fact-based time extension request for the State Route eighty-eight Pine Grove Improvement Project to be presented before the California Transportation Commission.
So moved.
All right.
I'm in the second.
You had a motion, had a second. Any other public comments? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. And you'll, uh, we'll put a team together to go down there in March? I'd like to be included. All right.
Me too.
Five B, Fiddletown Community Center Discussion of Possible Action relative to a request by the community center for partial or complete waiver of the permit fee of four hundred and eighty dollars to replace an electrical panel at the community center. Right, we have anybody here representing Fiddletown?
I told them I'd speak on the matter.
Okay, Supervisor O'Netto?
Um, what this is, you know, the Fiddletown Community Center and they're, they've always worked really hard up there. Um, like they have a library, they've done it on their own up there. Um, they've had, oh, like a food pantry at times. And so Fiddletown's kind of a, lack of better terms, kind of a little engine that, that could, they tried really hard. Um, and they're telling me how much insurance it costs in yearly. I think it's like twelve hundred bucks a month. And so they're raising the money. And so basically they have, um, a functioning, um, pretty viable, vibrant community center. And they just wonder if we could help them, um, stay alive. That's really what the request is for. A waiver of, um, permitting fees for new electrical panel.
Chuck, does that affect any other, other in the building department?
No, the building department's only request, only subject to that request. So it would be their permit, their building permit for the electrical.
I move to waive the, uh, permit fee?
Oh, good thing.
Go ahead.
That sounds like something the supervisor ought to use out of his discretion here.
Oh.
I'm going to, I have told them I'm going to contribute for the electrical panel for my discretionary fund.
Did you?
For the actual work, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll put a motion in to allow the, uh, four hundred and eighty dollars permit, uh, fee be waived for the Fiddletown Community Center for their electrical panel.
I'll second that.
Right. And a motion by Supervisor Brown and a second by Supervisor O'Netto. All in favor signify by saying.
Pardon, any public comment?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Any public comment on this? No? Any zoomers?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, we'll bring the question back. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And those hardworking folks up there.
They hustle pretty hard.
Five C, Human Resources Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Amendment to the County Code for a four percent salary raise for elected officials other than the Board of Supervisors. Suggested action to approve the ordinance or waive the reading and schedule for adoption on February eleventh. We talked, we approved this last time.
You, um, you authorized it, but it has to be done by ordinance. And so the ordinance has to be approved and go through the ordinance process. So in your packet, there's a draft ordinance. Um, the ordinance with the highlighted language, the highlighted numbers, those are the, um, actually the existing salary amounts that have been in place since two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-three. And, um, but on the, so after the ordinance itself, there's another table, uh, that HR prepared. Uh, that shows the four percent. The date there is, is incorrect. It says ten, one, twenty, twenty-five, four percent. But it's, so basically you would plug those numbers, those salary numbers in that second table into the ordinance. That's, that's the amount. Um, and, uh, it was suggested that, uh, so the, the trigger date was January first, twenty twenty-five. The pay period that includes that date, uh, starts on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. So I think for ease of the accounting, that it should start then, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Um, that's the recommendation.
Okay. Any questions, supervisors? Any public comment on this? Any zoomers?
No comment at this time.
Right.
I do have one comment.
Yes, please.
I, I voted no last time. Um, I'd vote no this time too. Um, it's not because of the quality of the work that the elected officials do. I'm just looking at dollars and so I'm not saying they're not worthy of the extra money. I'm just wanting to save the extra money. So just for the record.
All right, understood. We don't have any other comments. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend County Code Section two point six eight point two zero, point zero two zero, a four percent salary increase for elected officials, uh, other than the Board of Supervisors effective date December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Just, just to clarify, so we're, we're waiving the reading for today and then it's a dot, it's, it's, uh, is a two-week, there's a, basically a two-step process to approve ordinances. You can't approve it today. You waive the rea, you introduce it, you waive the reading and you put it over to the next meeting for the actual adoption.
Okay, I'll, I'll amend my motion.
My, my second.
All right, and a question, then it'll go on the consent.
It'll be on consent at the next meeting for actual adoption.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries four one. And then five D is the addendum we added. Emergency Medical Care Committee Approval of a Five-Year Extension with American Legion Post one oh eight and Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services or Medical Services Ambulance in Amter County.
So this is an ex,
Senator Brown?
Yeah, so this is an extension of the, uh, um, contract that American Legion has with Mountain County EMS. Um, this came before us and under the EMCC Board. And the, the MCC Board approved it to be forwarded to the supervisors to be sent. The contract has not changed, it's just extended for another five years. And so no, nothing was done in that aspect. The other thing that was briefed during the MCC meeting, which everybody got a copy of, is the Amter County Ambulance Agreement, the annual report. And all, you know, there's quite a bit of information sitting there. And third item that came up before the, uh, EMCC Board was a change of the bylaws. And that will come back before the Board of Supervisors at a later date. But what it meant to do is change some of the members. It pulled out some of the state, um, Cal, I mean, Cal Fire, um, CHP out of our EMCC since it's, you know, mainly a medical care as a local because Cal Fire is not controlled by it. You know, this is just items that are controlled within, um, the county, uh, operation or American Legion. You know, there are fire or American Legion ambulance. So the biggest question on for right now is just the, uh, extension of the contract for five years. We've got Alan out of American Legion in the audience and Tom, uh, Morton from Mountain County. If anybody has any questions other than what I presented to you. Sure.
Gets on here. Um, I'd be kind of curious, I hear American Legion ambulance is kind of struggling a little bit. Um, you know, I guess they're not paid a whole lot from like their Medi-Cal transports and stuff along that line. But I was also kind of curious, um, roughly what's the total compensation package for like that American Legion ambulance, like director would be roughly? I don't know if that's a number you would, you should probably have that in a ballpark figure, I would think.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Alan McNanny with American Legion Ambulance, President. Um, you talk about us struggling over the last couple of years. I can say yes, we have lost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last two years. Uh, basically it's COVID, the economy. Um, when your operating expenses go up over twenty percent and your income goes up twelve percent, you're going to be operating in the red.
Sure.
Um, we've, we've done a lot of things to mitigate those issues. Um, but yes, Medi-Cal, State of California, we're reimbursed today the same rate as we did twenty-eight years ago. Twenty-eight years without a raise. Thank you, State of California. Um, that's about seventeen percent of our business. Medicare is an average rate increase of about two to three percent a year. That does not keep up with the CPI. Our government payers is eighty percent of our business. So you have to think, be creative, do things out of the box, like the safety car program that we implemented in this county. You know, things like that. So we continue to do that. And we will be fine.
Yeah, okay.
We, we have money in the bank, money in reserves. Um, we are financially sound.
The medical, the Medi-Cal costs, those are controlled by the State of California, I would presume.
Yes.
Very good, okay.
Yes. We have, we have tried through the California Ambulance Association for the last fifteen years to get raises, uh, even when the State of California has been operating in the black. Um, you know, Jerry Brown's turned us down, Schwarzenegger's turned us down.
Good deal. Well, I'll keep that in mind.
All righty, thank you.
You know, one, one question, I think, um, approximately, what is, um, President's salary?
My salary is two hundred and twenty thousand a year.
Is that benefits and or is that just salary?
That's just salary.
Two twenty-seven?
Two twenty.
Two twenty? Yeah. I, I don't, I don't mind paying it, uh, I mean, I know it's what the American Legion ambulance does, but, um, yeah, I think that might be a little bit high, but, um, it's something to look at, I think. I understand you probably work hard. I get that. And there's a lot of things you gotta take care of, but. Uh, it's something when, when.
Well, when I have a paramedic making a hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Is that salary or total?
That's, that's salary that they pulled in.
I know paramedics are, are really hard to find, I hear. That's true.
Right. So we, you know, that was probably one of the post-COVID was, um, employee retention. We lost twenty percent of our employees due to mandatory vaccines for COVID.
Uh, where'd that, where'd that come from, the mandatory vaccine?
From CMS.
Okay.
And the United States Supreme Court held it.
Okay. I know a lot of people didn't like that.
Right. So we were going to lose our Medicare funding if we did not, same with hospitals. We're going to lose Medicare funding if they did not have mandatory vaccines.
Yeah, I think it was, it was way wrong, but it's something I can't change.
So, so we lost personnel there. Uh, paramedic schools were shut down for almost two years. So there was not anybody backfilling those paramedic positions. Um, so we had struggles. We did twenty thousand dollar sign-on bonuses. We bumped, currently today, we're still paying our employees ten percent above union wages, what we're required to. So we have done that to retain and maintain our employees and we are fully staffed.
Yeah, I have heard, I have heard trying to find a paramedic is really, 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 really hard.
Right, right. And right now. So, yep, you're welcome.
Because of salary, Alan?
Not really, um, public service, a lot of people just love the fire department, they want to get into the fire department, they don't want to work for private ambulance, um, and the retirement benefit, we can't compete with that, we cannot compete with PERS, we cannot, you know, it's impossible.
Understood.
Yeah, PERS is another story.
So like I said before us, right now, unless there's, is to uh approve the extension of the five-year contract.
Right, any public comment?
I, I just want to jump in, the county's not a party to this agreement, so I, I assume you're just looking for the board to.
To agree with it.
To accept.
Yeah, accept the finding.
To authorize.
Because the.
Mountain Valley to move forward with the extension.
Right.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, Tom would like to come up.
Yes, sure.
Um, good morning, everyone, Thomas Morton, Mountain County EMS, we changed our name, but all of us who've been there for a long time, we keep calling ourselves sometimes Mountain Valley too, so eventually we'll get it. Valley's gone, we're, we're, we're up here. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge um what Alan said about um staffing, um, COVID was a nightmare for the hospitals and EMS, the pipeline dried up for training, and um, we have other ambulance providers, and I just want to throw a kudo to ALA because they were very proactive with retention and hiring, and I, and um, we, we've seen ambulance providers in the state go out of business, and um, I just want to compliment ALA for, they were very proactive at retention. Um, people want to work there, but the economic reality is that the smaller ambulance providers can't compete with these big um urban, large operations like even Cal Fire, but um Sacramento that runs in EMS and ambulance transport, it's, it's hard for them to compete, so I do acknowledge what ALA's done, and I think that should be a matter of public record. So any other questions?
Heather, did the, I have copies of the EMCC report, if anyone needs them.
No, I, I got it.
You got it?
Everybody got it.
I brought some extra, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no zoomers?
Not at this time.
Okay. So do we need a motion, or do we just by consensus agree with it?
I, I assume um, Mountain County's EMS intends to approve it, as your board, or have you already?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We have not approved it yet.
So.
So this is, um, but whenever we go to these meetings, we always want
Yeah.
The input from the county.
Right.
Of, you know, whichever county is, is running with this, to make sure they have their input, so we just.
So I, I would just say, direction to the, the, the members, the board members on the, on that uh, that JPA?
Right.
Okay, directions been received. If anybody, unless somebody has a.
Get that, Heather. Okay. Five E is the minutes from the last meeting, any corrections?
A couple minor ones.
Did you give them to Heather?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment on the minutes?
Motion approved.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, motion by Supervisor O'Netto, a second by Supervisor Brown to approve the minutes with minor corrections. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And with that, we are approved, till the next meeting, adjourned.